Thank you for joining us this evening for the March fifth, two thousand and twenty four Montesereno regular city council meeting. Before the meeting is called to orbit, I would like to point out a few calls for specific council members, staff, and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. For tonight's meeting, Zoom is being used to allow public participation with this regular city council meeting. For those using Zoom to participate, there are two icons, chat and raise hand. Please use chat only to report to local issues such as being unable to hear a council member speaking. Please use raise hand to be recognized by the mayor and unable to speak to the councilor. Only attendees using the Zoom application can use the raise hand option to comment. Participants commenting from a telephone will only be able to listen if not provide feedback or public comment. Lastly, when we're not all missing, all votes in the meeting must be taken by all.
It's seven oh one, and I will call a regular meeting of the Montesereno City Council meeting to order. Our deputy chief has graciously agreed to lead us into collective allegiance. So shall we start with them?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands oneish in the visible with the vision of.
We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Turner? Councilmember Maitrechuk?
Present.
Councilmember Lahi?
Present.
Vice Mayor Frank?
Here.
Mayor Will Sherman?
Present.
All present, thank you.
Orders of the day, do we have any orders of the day? Anybody like to change the order of business on anything? No? Next item on the agenda is announcements. Does anybody have any, anything you want to announce? I actually do, and it's another sad one. William McCollum, longtime Montesereno resident, passed away recently. He is survived by his wife of sixty-five years, his children and grandchildren. William attended the Stanford Business Grad School and also the Wharton School of Business, and he had a long career in finance. He was also very well known around the city for driving around in his red open MG, which is a great little car. He was a member of many local clubs and organizations and served on several boards. And he will be missed by his family, friends, and everybody who knew him. All right. And on that sad note, we will move on to presentations. Please.
Hey, thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, city staff, it's a pleasure to be here. My name is Dennis Lally. I'm the Deputy Chief of Administration and Planning for the Santa Clara County Fire Department. I myself and Chief Schumay are here on behalf of Chief Solana Gergout to give our annual report here to the city council. So just a little bit about our station there, right there on Saratoga-Los Gatos Road, our Kito Fire Station, Station seventy-eight. There it houses Engine seventy-eight and Water Tender seventy-eight. We know that the city has unique hazards, has a wildland interface that's heavy here in the city with many narrow roads and, as we'll talk about with some of the projects that we were able to complete this year. We're very interested in our evacuation route hardening. Just a brief report on the, I will go to the next slide, please. On the amount of calls that we had this past year, right around two hundred and fifty calls here for the Kito Fire Station itself within the city of Montesereno. We know that the Kito Fire Station also assists with other areas, that being in Moscato and Saratoga for the most part. They also, because of the water tender, are dispatched to all of our high-risk vegetation fires and areas that have a rural water supply. But right around two hundred and fifty calls in our general area for the year. Only one incident with dollar loss, which was a vehicle fire here in the city. So nothing severely consequential. And a grand total of twenty-seven public education programs were held here, just over three hundred attendees with a total of about seventy-seven staff hours. So definitely active here in the city, but glad that we don't have a higher call volume to speak of here specifically within the Montesereno area. We go to the next slide, we'll give you a little update on what we're doing with the fire department. It's been a very busy year for two thousand and twenty-three. We've just about completed our Redwood Fire Station there up on Highway seventeen in Redwood Estates. It's been a very long process. Our fire crews have taken residents in the building, they have their temporary certificate of occupancy. And so we're looking forward to doing our full and final grand opening here in the spring. So it's been a long time coming for that particular station. We went from a modular fire station to one where we now have full facilities for our staff and the ability to build out from there. So really excited about that. The other big capital improvement project that we had this year was, in the past year, was working on our new headquarters facility. We'll be moving out of the town of Los Gatos and into the city of Campbell for our new headquarters facility. We're able to merge two facilities into one. Right now, our staff are spread out across two buildings. We're able to now reconsolidate. When I first got hired here, when Chief Schumay got hired here, we were all within the same building and we were bursting at the seams. Then we had to move our Fire Prevention Division over one building. Now we'll have everyone back into one building. So just under fifty thousand square feet of office space, if my memory serves me right. So that's also tracking for the summertime for us to make the move. So very excited for that. If we move to the next slide, we'll talk about some of our fleet replacement items that we think concerns the city of Montesereno. So we recently acquired a crew carrier. We did a project here on Highway nine with our Versona Fields crew. We were able to remove some of the hazardous vegetation along Highway nine. Our fuel crew will talk about them in a minute. It's really good for limbing up trees and bushes and things that sort in the public right of way in public lands. This crew carrier allows them to now be more functional, not just as an ability to move eight people around the district, but also it makes them more functional for firefighting, being able to get out on fires when they occur. And so they'll be starting, actually, they'll be back to start their season in about, in a couple of weeks, and their season will run all the way to around December. So they'll be back in season for when the summer comes. They're based out of Versona County Park, so very close here to Montesereno. The other unit that we received this year was a Breeding Support Unit. That unit is based out of Cupertino right down the street. It provides breathing air and other resources when we have structured fires. It's also part of our Hazardous Materials Response Team. And so that unit also provides services here to Montesereno. They come on every single fire that we have. So anytime we would have a fire here, a home, a house fire, or anything of the sort, they would show up. We're expecting three new fire engines to come into our fleet in the coming year. They're right about midway completed, so we're looking to see those more toward the fall to come into the fleet. The nearest one that will affect you is Engine seventy-three out of Saratoga. They'd be getting a replacement fire engine. We'd also have another water tender similar to what you see there at Kito Fire Station that will be coming into the fleet. That would be based out of Los Altos. And then we have some of our basic fleet replacement happening where we're making the transition to hybrid vehicles. So trying to find ways to be sustainable with our fleet. We can go to the next slide. Some of the projects we undertook in two thousand and twenty-three, they were very, very IT-centered. One of the big projects, the major projects that we were happy to complete in September of twenty-three, we went live on our new computer-aided dispatch system. This has been a project that has gone on for about five years, give or take. Definitely an upgrade. We went from a homegrown computer-aided dispatch system to an off-the-shelf system that gives us far more capabilities than we had before. And so we're very excited to have that in place. With that, we were able to update some of our response plans, and we're even moving into automatic vehicle location dispatching. So whenever our vehicles are out and about in the field, they can be just picked up right by GPS and sent to the nearest call. Right now, they're currently dispatched out of the fire station, so we'll see an improvement in services there. Couple of other major projects that we had, we had a replacement of our record management system, which allows us to better quantify the work that we do. That was also a significant lift that took place and completed in January of twenty-three. We've also improved our use of ArcGIS, which I'm sure your planning department uses significantly. And so we improved our use of ArcGIS in the field, which helps us to quicker turn around the data on inspections, hydrant inspections, wildland urban interface inspections. All of those are being used in the field with mobile devices, so really excited for that. Further, we also built out our pre-fire management wildfire resilience program, not just with technology, but also with additional staff. And so we're building out that program to better serve the community. Speaking of our pre-fire management program, we can go to the next slide. Our Versona Fuels crew, they completed various projects here in the Los Gatos-Montesereno area, along with Saratoga. They did work along Highway nine to clear some of the hazardous fuel along the way. Some of it proved to be difficult because a lot of it was on private property. It was considered ornamental vegetation, so we definitely had some challenges with that. We do have proposed projects that, for some of the larger evacuation routes in the area, such as along Prospect and along Hicks. Hicks being one of the riverine to the water bears that can get us out to the backside of the valley, back out to San Jose. So we have those, those projects being planned right now. While we're here and we're talking about fuel reduction, it's probably a nice place to talk about some of your concerns around Highway nine, about the eucalyptus trees and things of that sort. We understand that's a concern here for the community. We also understand that that's a Caltrans right-of-way. And so one of the places where we've been able to assist is not necessarily in removing the trees, but if the trees were to come down, if they were to block the roadway or become a hazard, that's where our fuels crew or our engine crews, if they're off-season, can come in. They can buck up or cut up the limbs and move them off the roadway so that the emergency access is not, not blocked. And so we're still committed to doing that, but we know that it's also going to require collaboration from the city with, with Caltrans District Four. As we come down to the end of our presentation, we'll go to our next slide. Just a brief slide on the community preparedness programs that we have scheduled for two thousand and twenty-four. Again, this slide presentation is in your agenda packet, so it's something that we could share with our community. It's also on our website, but we have various programs that are slated for the community to assist them in not only wildfire preparedness, but also evacuation preparedness, emergency preparedness, and also with the community emergency response training. So that in a nutshell is our, our report out for, for the year. We tried to keep it concise this year. We're, we're happy with the community engagement with our community education. We're happy that we have a manageable call volume and that we're proud to serve the citizens of Montesereno. Are there any questions you have for the fire department? Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I am, I was wondering, especially for Montesereno, it's, it's very difficult to have core fire trucks to come into our streets. Do you have any services that we could use in case we need it for helicopters or airplanes to come in?
No, not the Santa Clara County Fire Department. And for the size of the, your lots and your streets, you're going to have very narrow width for the size of helicopters that will be coming in here. The closest helicopters you have are from CalFire. Currently, there's one up the hill at Alma by Lexington Reservoir that will be moving in the next few years. And so you will have a little bit of an extended response time, but that also is a large helicopter. So its rotor width is going to far exceed what's in your roadways. So the safest thing is to have good access to be able to get down off the hill. Airplanes, now you're talking about a vegetation fire where they're using retirement for a fuel break, but there's no way you're really going to bring an aircraft in if it has to do with evacuations.
Can we have helicopters that will take water, for example, from the dam to, to Montesereno in case we have fire?
Yes, so if we're talking about a vegetation fire, not necessarily evacuations, the, the land that abuts Montesereno's state responsibility area. And so you're going to have a joint response from the Santa Clara County Fire Department, as well as the California Department of Forestry. In their response package from the forestry department comes one helicopter, maybe two, depending on the size of the fire, and at least two, what are called air tankers, so aircraft, that will come, that will assist with helping contain the fire. So they will come if we have a vegetation fire that's moving into the interface with your citizens.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I always said that residents can ask for an inspection of their property, right? How far residents or what fire dangers exist. Do people ever use that? Do you get a lot of calls?
They do, actually, they do. We're, we're building that out. I spoke about how we built out our pre-fire managing wildfire resilience program. We had a community wildfire specialist who works with your planning department. That was a temporary position. Monday was her first A partner. And so we're excited to bring her on. Chelsea, who was our temporary employee, went through a competitive process for hiring, and she actually was successful in getting the job. And so she'll maintain that tie with your community. Between Chelsea and our prevention division, we're able to schedule out those different requests from the public to go out and do those assessments and to help show them where they can do the work.
Thank you. You're welcome.
I just had a call, my, I went to the cert program a couple of years ago and I wanted to congratulate the fire department to get to a good job for the last year.
Thank you.
For good year.
We'll make sure to pass that on, thank you. We appreciate the citizens' support in doing so. Community resilience in the midst of an emergency is actually one of the main tenants of the community, like getting back together. And so I really appreciate the community's work with cert. Yes.
If you don't mind, I'll ask a question.
I don't mind at all.
I, I think one of the programs that we need here is a program to recruit new cert members for the city. And that's, that's been very, very difficult, not only because of the commitment, but also just the number of hours that they need to be able to be cert, certified, right? Is, is there any way you can have a program that really include Montesereno residents with Campbell, for example, and Los Gatos?
I will be glad to pass that on to our community education and risk reduction services program. I'm sure that we can combine them with the other classes that are happening so that it, it's not such a burden on the residents or maybe such a small team.
Thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions, council members? Well, in that case, thank you very much for your presentation and thank you for all the good work that you and that department do.
Glad to be a cert most, thank you.
Thank you. We're moving on to oral communications. This is a time when persons wishing to request a council on any matter of city business not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. I don't think there's anybody in chambers here, so anybody online?
There are people online, but no hands are raised.
No hands are raised? In that case, we'll all move on. Resident communications, have we received any resident communications? Going through the calendar very quickly. Consent calendar. Is there anybody, any council member who wants to throw any items from the consent calendar at this time? Is there a motion?
So we moved here about that second.
I don't think we need to do a public hearing.
Yeah, we're coming.
And all, and all abstaining for the council, and that person.
Okay, there'll be a public hearing about the consent calendars. Anybody in chambers who wishes to comment on the consent calendar? Seeing none, is there anybody online? So only items three and four need to be separated out?
Yes.
Yep, yeah. Okay, so we will treat items two and five first. Is there a motion to move along with items two and five?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Wait, who are we taking the second from?
I'll take it, okay.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And then we will treat items three and four separately. Is there a motion to approve items three and four of the consent calendar?
Well, I, on item three, there's a thing that's made to me, so yes, I can, we're on the whole thing.
You can, you still can.
I can still, or I, I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay. So is there something?
I believe that we approve items three and four of the consent calendar.
Second? I will second it. Or did you second it?
Sorry, you need one minute, let me, we're going to let me just see. So I was just verifying that you did report out on the event that you attended that you're seeking reimbursement for.
Uh, yeah. Okay, basically, the person that's on the city was supposed to for a political season meeting in Monterey County, which was pretty relevant. All day of, two days of seminars, different residential programs. And I would have been pointing, you guys, something you can attend it next year, for sure.
Is this the one that you shared that somebody had mentioned that the small cities should join together? So you need to, just trying to remember.
Yeah.
So there was. So we have the motion by Vice Mayor, and then we have a second?
Yeah, that's me. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries four, zero, one.
So so we have four and should, you abstain?
Yeah. Public hearings. We have non, non-tribal business, there's nothing on the agenda. New business. Except the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four mid-year budget report. There is a stop report on this.
Yes, Mayor, and that will be Fredo Samoranas delivering the report on that item.
Yes, can I be heard?
Yes.
Yes.
Loise, if you allow me to share my screen.
I should give to this point.
Let's see. I'm sorry, I'm trying to find. Okay, so I have the mid-year budget. It's, the purpose of this report is to update the city with regards to the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four mid-year budget. And my process was basically running the general ledger of the accounting system through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, which puts us halfway through the year. I did a thorough analysis of the general ledger, looking at all the accounts, all the revenues and expenditures. And on some of the key items on our, on our budget, I reached out to various reports like the Santa Clara County Assessor's Office, where they published a report dated last February twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four, which shows their estimated tax, property tax distribution for this fiscal year. So the budget has been, the mid-year budget has been updated for that. Then I reached out to the project managers for some of the CIP projects that the city plans to do this year, both on the revenue and expenditure side. No changes, no significant changes were noted in that, so I left that flat. Overall, the budget is projected to have a five-point-eight million in revenues, which is three hundred and nineteen higher versus the adopted budget. On the expenditure side, we're looking at six-point-two million in expenditures, which is approximately a hundred and seventy thousand higher versus the budget, the adopted budget. I guess if, in summary, in taking a look at the fiscal impact to the city, the five-point-eight, again, the five-point-eight million is higher versus the adopted budget. The expenditures is six-point-two. The net result of this is a four, four hundred thousand draw from our fund reserves, which is actually lower by about a hundred and fifty thousand versus our original adopted budget. In conclusion, I'm looking at our mid-year budget and have the opinion that it's a sound budget, and I think I think the city is in good shape for this fiscal year. Any questions?
You can call somebody else first.
Go ahead.
Okay. Ray, I've got some questions here. It appears that we're doing pretty well with our budget. We are overspending, but the increase in revenue makes up for that. So instead of spending five hundred and fifty K for reserves, we're, we're expecting to spend just a bit over four hundred thousand, right? And I think that's moving in the right, in the right direction. And here, here are my questions. My question is on the community center funding. Ray, in the notes on expenses, you have about one-point-two-six million for the community center. And I have three questions that relate to that one-point-two-six million. The first question is, can we safely assume that the significant portion of that money will not be spent during this budget period?
Um, yes, I'm pretty confident it's not going to be that one-point-two million will be spent in this fiscal year, given that the project has not gone out to bid since, you know, in looking at the cash flow requirements for this project, you have to look at what stage we are in this, in that community center project. So I figure, you know, we're in March two thousand and twenty-three, we need to go out to bid. Then we, the city selects its competitive bids, then staff and city council reviews the bids. City council accepts the bids, and then city secures all necessary permits to proceed with the project. And then I assume that after the permits are secured, they can commence with the project. So I suspect the project manager on this project would be be best to describe what that timing is in relationship to those steps that I just mentioned. So, um, so the answer, the quick answer to your question is, I don't believe the bulk of that one point two million will be spent in this fiscal year.
Right, so my next question relating to this is the budget does not reflect any of the offsetting grants that we have received, is that correct?
No, the budget does include, it does include some grants that was secured by staff and council member, um, let's see. Uh, the, it's a total of, uh, almost seven hundred thousand in grant, um, let me take my, my notes here. So we got eighteen thousand, that's coming in from Silly Val, Silicon Valley Clean Energy, and that's, uh, earmarked for a battery or, um, electrical panels, energy, solar energy panels. There's another grant, a hundred eighty thousand, it's a Prop sixty-eight per capita program. Uh, and I believe there's an extent, there's a, um, deadline for that. Um, I think it's been extended, I think the original deadline was two thousand twenty-three, but, um, I believe the city engineer knows of that extension. Um, and then there's the, uh, the big one, the five hundred thousand, which was, uh, gotten by city council member, Micah Check. It's Silicon Valley Clean Energy Decarbonization Grant for five hundred thousand. So that totals almost seven hundred thousand. So if you take that away from the one point two million, uh, you're looking at about, um, four hundred thousand, that'll be, uh, I'm sorry, five hundred thousand, that'll be drawn from our Montessorino's general reserves.
Okay, so, so, so I believe we already have about two hundred thousand dollars in, in grants, some of which have already been spent. And we're, we're expecting another five hundred thousand, which you just said, right?
Well, as, as these grants goes, they're reimbursable grants. So you go out and spend it, and then you seek, uh, reimbursement from, uh, the folks that are offering those grants.
So have you, have you actually gotten receipts for them and for?
Well, we, we have the receipts, we have the receipts for all these expenditures. I think, um, staff needs to apply, um, for reimbursement. And then we will be, and then we will, we will be paid.
Okay. Okay, okay, so may I ask another question that relates to reporting of any expenses related to the community center?
Oh, sure.
Um, should we be accounting for this money differently? Uh, should we perhaps put the funds that we've already allocated for the community center plus whatever remains of the grants that we have already received in a separate reserve account? Then deposit, uh, any new grants or donations into that account and pay community center expenses out of that account? And this way, it's more transparent, especially to our residents.
No, absolutely. In all our CIP, uh, projects that we do here at Montessorino, I track each, uh, transaction, both on the revenue and expenditure side, by the respective project. So in this case, uh, the Monas, the community center project will be tracked specifically and identify each transaction and be, uh, tracked accordingly. So yes, they, they would be, uh, considered in separate, um, accounts, if you will.
Yeah, I think it would make our financials much more understandable if we accounted for the community center financing separately. And this way, the residents can actually come in and take a look at it and say, okay, this is, this is the funding for, for the city, and here's the funding for the community center. That's a lot easier to see rather than, than looking at one budget and then flagging it.
Right.
So, could you, could you take a look at that, please?
Yes, uh, if you recall, when I prepared the original, uh, fiscal year two thousand twenty-four budget, I had a slide that showed all the, um, projects that the city was, uh, embarking on. And in that, um, I detailed by line item the revenues that we were, uh, receiving from whatever funding sources we had. And then I, I showed the various expenditures against those, uh, against those, uh, revenue streams.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll do the same, I'll do the same for the, um, for this project, as well as all the other CIP projects that we have.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for doing a good job.
Well, sure, thank you.
Any other questions, council members?
So, thank you very much for the report. Um, my, my question, though, really is in terms of how it's formatted. And is it possible in the future, maybe, that we could get this report in something like an Excel spreadsheet, something that we could pop open pretty easily, because it would have been nice to be able to maybe sort the different items that are in here, which ones are we on track, which ones are above average, which ones aren't performing well? But right now, when, when, when you're reading this, it's hard to really do any analysis of it as a whole document. And, and, uh, it's something like putting in the numbers with like two hundred and seventy-five point two thousand with the word thousand written out. It's, it's, when you're going through and trying to search for things, um, like when I was running this through my analysis program, it, it really couldn't do anything because all of the numbers were written out in text instead of displayed as numbers.
Um, you know, um, council member, I do have a report, and I thought it was attached to my report. And I can briefly share with that report with you here.
No, that's okay, we don't have to do it tonight, I'm just talking about it in the future.
Yes, yes, I can, I can, I can do that.
Your report. Folks were used to dealing with spreadsheets a little bit more.
Yes, I, I will provide that, uh, going forward. I didn't do that, but fortunately, I thought one of these, uh, attachments, uh, included that report, but apparently I, I uploaded the wrong file.
Oh, okay.
I know that exists, I have seen it.
Yeah, I know, I've seen them in the past, yeah.
Yeah, I, one of those reports, that, that second, that second report on the attachment, it was supposed to be that Excel spreadsheet that you were referring to. And, uh, and the commentary was just explanations to those variances, um. So I apologize for not, uh, having it uploaded with my report.
Okay. No, but that's a, no.
Okay, cool. Maybe, uh, maybe you can provide that, well, in the, in the minutes of the, uh, of this meeting for the council.
And then I'll attach that Excel spreadsheet that, uh, the council member was referring to.
Right, thank you. Any other questions? In that case, we will open it up for public comment. Is there anybody in chambers here who wishes to comment? No. Anybody online?
Yes, but no hands up.
No hands raised. In that case, well, we'll bring it back to council and, um, pay a motion to accept the budget report.
I wish.
Motion to accept.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Staying against, opposed, any?
Abstained.
Abstained. Where the motion carries four, zero, one, with one council member abstaining. Next item on the agenda is committee and commission reports. We will just probably do it in the order that's shown here in the agenda. Councilman, sorry, councilman.
That's all right, nothing to report.
Thank you. Council member, aye.
Uh, nothing really to report except, uh, city association and the former JPA. They're, they sent out their formal, uh, JPA documents, assumed the bathroom. So I, I request, uh, I think at the next meeting, you guys know if there's anything you should look at or change. In, in the bylaws that the JPA has to audit for the city association, so the city council can take a look at it. If you may still be commenting, if you don't like them, or if something would work better. The second thing that also needs you all to file a Form seven hundred at the last minute, because it was due within twenty days, I had to pack up until, yeah. So we're, uh, every rule, shame of God, man, he and I, yeah, got it, yeah. Shall leave the clerk, just put it out to drive and pick it up at the middle of the ring last night, I don't know, a couple days ago, so.
Usually these Form seven hundreds go through the Santa Clara County system. I'm, I'm used to you doing them online, but I think this one is different.
Yeah, supposedly they'll put it on next time, but this one was due thirty days after the year, clearly probably. Normally, you have to let it, April one or something.
I believe, um, they needed the actual, like, hard copy, like, signature.
Yeah, she claimed she wanted her signature, which I, I don't know, I agree with that, but, but anyway, so, so, Montessorino has to be filed, has to be filed by April one, I believe. And then, uh, library association, I went and filed that, I was, right. That's my report.
Anyway, that's my return. Okay. Council member, aye.
Um, the only meetings that have occurred since the last report was Silicon Valley Clean Energy, um, and the executive committee met, and the audit committee, uh, in the audit committee, we, um, approved the financial statements, the audit report, uh, that's attached, the financial statements recommended that the board approve that, uh, their next meeting. And, uh, I was, uh, elected chair of the audit committee.
And Brianus. There's also an email for Kirish coming up, who's, uh, leaving twenty-two years now.
His, his last day is the thirty-first of March, and the new CEO, uh, Monica Pedillo, uh, comes in uh, on April the first, and at the meeting on the thirteenth, on Wednesday, there's, uh, an event forum, a dinner, if you will, at, I believe, four P M. Or five P M, I can't remember, and then, five. And then, uh, the meeting itself is at seven P M.
Yeah, I would recommend if you can all go, we should go, because there's five hundred thousand, we're at, oh, there's, we're good time to meet some of those individuals out there, so they can all.
Five o'clock. Right, that's, that, that concludes my, uh, my report.
I have one report, uh, we've had the West Valley Mayor's meeting, uh, last week. Uh, the city manager and I attended, and, uh, the main topic of discussion was the housing element, of course. And none of the five cities have been certified. Uh, Los Gatos has taken some steps which, uh, are maybe somewhat controversial. I'm not sure you know, um, Saratoga is getting pretty desperate also, they, um, they, they don't know what to do at this point. They have, they keep getting comments that are different every time that they resubmit, and then they get different comments again. So it's, uh, it's not a good situation, and, uh, it's hard to tell where this is going. Everybody was very frustrated and in the same boat. The other thing that I brought up actually was Highway Nine. Um, I talked specifically to the mayors of Saratoga and Los Gatos to see if we can do something together to increase awareness and, uh, maybe form a team together to approach Caltrans to do something about this. So I'll go, I'll drive that, see if we can finally get something done there. It is very scary, especially with the summer season coming up. Uh, Montessorino will host the, uh, West Valley Mayor's meetings in May and November. And, uh, we'll have to find a venue where, you can have a nice restaurants or conference rooms in the city. We'll find something nice, I'm sure. Right, that was my report, um, council member comments? Any council member want to comment on?
Just following up on that, certainly, I think I'd be, I don't think approved now. See, you're saying, yeah, they're, they're trying to figure out whether the business remedy applies or not. But they would consider it approved, probably, even more than they should get.
They had forty, forty dollars ready, applications, and some of them came in in the week that they were certified. So they don't know what to do with those. You can just reject them outright, or?
I guess they've already, also, they're, they're, a lot of talks are in those areas.
Okay. Any other comment, no? And then your future agenda items.
Yeah, I, I'd like to have the community center as a ongoing agenda editor. Some status before I'm back next time, I don't know what your plan is, but, like, what is working out? It'd be good for us to keep getting feedback on it to make sure it keeps moving and a lot of things are done, right? So. If you would be fine enough to get that updated next time, then maybe put it on a special agenda every other, I think that'd be, whatever's used to go. You can still track them. That'll be.
Um, I'd also like to remind everybody that in two weeks, we have, uh, our strategic planning session. Our, that's the regular time, seven o'clock, the rest of the agenda is very light. So, the city manager will be the facilitator, now, so please send your items, your suggested, uh, strategic items to the city manager.
Yeah, uh, one, one more question I had on the housing element. And, uh, I know we did a report last time on the status of the previous housing element. And the current housing element, I believe you submitted it, and go to him, back on that, or anything.
Well, we, we received an email that said, thank you for your housing element, we'll get back to when we can.
Right, yeah.
So, now Diana started a weekly email to our reviewer to just hopefully annoy him and not have any response.
Sure, I'm glad to hear that, thank you.
But I'm sure, if you imagine, we're gonna predict when that happens.
Um, as requested the last city council meeting, um, previously, uh, I was authorized by council to speak on behalf of the city of Montessorino, uh, in the general rate case for, uh, that San Jose, uh, Water Company is putting forward. And, uh, that's not on the agenda yet, um, and it's not critical beyond tonight, which is why I was fine with that. But it would be helpful if it was on, if it would be on the next agenda.
Yes. We discussed the agenda next time, uh, this morning, and it is not the agenda.
Okay. Um, it is interesting, uh, San Jose Water Company, I'm sure that the other, uh, people at the dais here, uh, received the note that there's a new, uh, uh, president for San Jose Water Company, which is the local company, not the consolidated, uh, company. So.
Yeah, I think we all received that, so, not pretty. All right, um, unless there's anything else, um, that finished, that's, that's it for our regular and general city manager report. And the city manager.
Just a couple updates, um, we received the shed for the NICP, it's on the side of our building. Matches our building so well, you may not have noticed. But if anybody wants to come take a look after the meeting, we can walk out there. And, uh, update on the community center, we are running the ad to solicit the bids this Friday. So that is being noticed in the, uh, and this is the Law Scout's Weekly Times. So that's the update on the community room. We're just running the ad to solicit bids with a four-week deadline for them to respond.
So, I, I assume it gives them all the details that they need to be able to pay, or?
Yes.
By the way, thank you very much. Right, thank you for doing that.
Quick question, just out of curiosity, um, does the Los, Los Gatos have more readership these days? Or are we still liking the Los Gatos Weekly? I don't know, I, I haven't opened that paper in so long since they fired everybody, and it really just turns into a real estate advertising brochure. But the Los Gatos actually has some decent news in it.
It has to be a, um, newspaper of general circulation, and I don't know that the Los Gatos.
Doesn't.
Clarifies, but, we can find out, though.
And just kind of out of curiosity, I'd like to support them also.
My inclination is to say that the Weekly has a wider
My inclination is to say that the Weekly has a wider distribution in the sense that it is linked with Mercury News.
Yes. And they give them away the, all the restaurants and everything and?
They've been around much longer as well.
Is that one source? Is that one source enough or do we need to add the other ones as well also?
Well, that is what's required.
Same.
So just to provide a notification and a publication available in your community.
No, I understand that is required, but is that enough for us to get the, uh, bids?
We think so because we put a four week time to respond on the bids as well.
Is there a, a bulletin board or anything that cities use those jobs that they're bidding on? Like a bid board or something?
I think they're here for the, somebody's outside. No, no, I think he's got a badge, so he, they're here for the.
It's the eight o'clock ballot collection. I was gonna also announce we have nine more minutes to turn in your ballots. You haven't done so. No, we had, uh, many residents and others turning in their ballots today. Quite a, probably a hundred and fifty people.
We've had it.
All day long.
In and out, yeah, all day.
This used to be all people voting in this primary election.
This used to be actual polling center when it is at the poll.
Yes.
Now you have a box center.
I think people, um, find us to be very convenient in Montes Reno.
All right, that was it.
That is it. Thank you.
All right, so, um, we're back to the agenda. Um, we will now, we have to close session.
Before you, uh, we have to close session, would you like to open a public comment for?
For the close session.
Yes, for the conference with legal counsel in litigation, government code section five, four, nine, five, six, point nine. Case name, Pageant versus Critis Wright, uh, United States District Court, North District, Grand Central. Case number. Uh, case number five, zero, four, C V, zero, three, nine, four, six. And then staff present will be city attorney and city manager.
Anybody in the audience who wishes to comment on this, uh, closed session content?
No hands are raised.
Anybody online who has raised their hand that they would like to comment?
No injuries.
Okay. In that case, we are now in closed session.
Thank you for that.
After a short break.
That's all you can do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, just.
We are back in more regular session. The report on the closed session that we just had is that there's nothing to report. And with that, that was the final item on the agenda and I will adjourn the meeting, the regular meeting of the Most Regular City Council at 8:59 PM.